Well, welcome everyone to the March 26, 2020 St. Peter Board of Education School Board Meeting. As you see, we're not in the Governor's Room, we're at home. We are doing a video meeting for the first time, I think, ever. So bear with us in the recording, or if you are on the line. This still is a public meeting and complies with Minnesota Statute 13D .021. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website. We'll need to have a few different rules or procedures because it's online than we normally would. We're going to go around and check in in a minute like we do with recorded meetings. And if you just see your way around Google here, if you move your mouse around the screen, there's a white bar at the bottom. There's a red phone. Don't hit that because then you'll leave the call. But there's a microphone button to the left of it. And if you have to sneeze, like I do, you're going to mute. Then you can sneeze or do whatever. It also limits background noise. So if you want to just keep that on mute most of the time, and then if you want to speak, take it off of mute. If you're on the phone, I can see if you're on mute as well, so that would be a good message to me that you want to speak. Otherwise, if you're on video, just kind of wave your hands as well. If your kid or some pet is doing something weird in the background and you don't want that to be preserved for the public, you can quick click on the right of the phone and you can cut your camera off for a minute. Those of us that are on camera probably should leave our cameras on most of the time, but sometimes you need to just shut that off for a minute. Sarah is presenting, and so our main screen here has gone to the agenda. So we'll get into that in a minute. But if we could go around and just say our names and that we're present for the meeting. So Dr. Soderland, I know you're on the phone. Why don't we start with you and then Tim?
Bill Soderland, present for the meeting.
Tim, you broke up there a little bit, but...
I am present. This is Tim Locens.
Thank you. There's a third person on the phone?
I'm here. Can anybody hear me?
We can now.
I'm present.
Tracy Stewie is present for the meeting.
Drew Dixon, present.
John Carlson, present for the meeting.
Jeff Olson, present for the meeting.
So have we accounted for all school board members? I believe we have, right? All seven of us are here?
Yes.
Yes. There are 16 people on this call. There's someone else on the phone besides Tim and Bill. Do you want to introduce yourself? All right, that's okay too. But we do have all the school board members accounted for. We're going to go through the agenda in just a minute, but a couple of procedural things. We need to say our name before making a motion or a second, such as Carlson moves to adopt the agenda or something like that, and then to second. And then all votes will need to be a roll call vote, and so you'll need to say at least your first name, but preferably first and second name, and then whether you approve or do not approve the motion. And then we can adopt those motions. So with that, I will read through the agenda. So we've already called the meeting to order. We, in a minute, will look for a motion and a second to adopt the agenda, but the action items in the agenda are special actions to deal with pandemics. And then number two, consider an action to convert future school board study sessions and regular meetings to teleconference meetings pursuant of MS 13D .021 until further notice. And that is the state statute that allows us to conduct meetings this way when we have to, and that's during this pandemic. So we move into information items after that, update on COVID-19 plans, and then adjournment. Is that correct, Dr. Olson?
That's correct.
Great, thank you. Just another reminder, if you're not speaking, if you want to hit that microphone on the bottom, if you make it red, that means that it's muted, and then we don't get background noise as much. So that's a good way to do it. I am hearing a little background noise. I'm sure other people are too.
Do you know how they're muted if they're on the phone?
If they're on the phone, they'd have to mute it. Like I have an iPhone, so I...
Oh, okay.
You know, you'd have to mute your iPhone that way. If you don't know how to mute it, it's okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, let me try to mute myself.
Thank you. Perfect. That's great.
We got it.
Yeah. So Dr. Olson, or well, we need a motion and a second to adopt the agenda.
Tracy Stewie will make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Drew Dixon, second.
Excellent. We have a motion and a second, so we'll do a roll call vote. It's a little bit difficult because I don't know if the order of the screens are the same for everyone, but Tracy, why don't you start?
Tracy Stewie, do I say yes, right? Is that what we're doing?
If you approve your motion, yes.
Okay, yeah, Tracy Stewie, yes.
Vicki?
Vicki Hager, aye.
Drew?
Drew Dixon, aye.
John?
John Carlson, aye.
Tim Locens, aye.
Thank you. Dr. Soderland?
Bill Soderland, aye.
Ben Leonard, aye. I think that's everyone. The agenda is approved. This isn't unwieldy at all. Dr. Olson, do you want to talk about action item number one?
Action item number one, what we're talking about is a couple of items that were required -- I said that in times where virus. This is required that we're, I think, need to take some actions relatively quickly, and that's one of the reasons for the special board meeting. There are two specific items that we're requesting right now. The first is the approval of our COVID-19 sick leave plan. The plan as presented is in your packet under the heading of a memo from Etive Craftke, our Special Programs HR Director. We are asking to have our staff be able to use sick leave between March 18th and April 1st for a child if the child's place of care has been closed due to COVID-19. One of the things that we'll talk about in just a minute is that the national legislation that was passed beginning on April 2nd provides 10 days of additional sick leave for specific COVID-19-related situations. And one of those situations is if the care of a individual staff member has, the childcare has closed and something that's out of their control. So part of our sick leave use plan is to allow to go back and provide, in effect, that same kind of provision under our existing sick leave. The second is we have a number of employees who have used up their sick leave for a variety of reasons. And the second part to the plan is to allow our employees to use five days of sick leave from their 2021 sick leave. So if I'm out of sick leave now, I can have five days, in effect, borrowed from whatever number of days I have under my contract, my contract or my employment agreement in 2021. We think that's pretty important because we have people who, we certainly don't want to have them think that they should, in any way, shape, or form, should come to work if they're not feeling well, or if they fall under one of the other conditions as outlined by the Minnesota Department of Health for staying home. So those are really the two biggest things that are a part of that sick leave use plan. Once April 2nd kicks in, then the federal legislation takes over with those 10 additional days, and there are a number of conditions that an individual could use that additional sick leave for. But we really wanted to highlight those two pieces. So does anybody have any questions about that?
This is Tracy Stewie. I have a question. I saw on there, it says, you know, the employees who are using sick leave are not expected to carry out work duties. How does that work with teachers, then? I'm guessing you're not getting substitute teachers, but then how is that information going to be, I guess, without knowing how the plan's going to look? How are families or students going to know they don't have a teacher for that day?
Well, we have two plans in place. We believe that we'll deal with that. We have a buddy system, if you will. So there's another teacher who can carry out the teacher's plans if it's a short-term situation, a day or two. We also are identifying that there would be a specific substitute who's trained in the use of our technology at both the middle and high school in one group and the two elementary buildings, north and south, as another group, should somebody be needing to take sick leave for a longer period of time. So that's where we're at at this point.
Okay. You would think that I live with a teacher, I would know, but I really didn't, so I was curious how that was going to work.
Yep.
Thanks.
It's a good question. Anyone else?
The second item is the revision to the 2019-2020 school calendar. And what we've had to do, obviously, is to make some adjustments with the Governor's closure of schools from March 18th to March 27th. And so, as you may recall, we ended up having March 16th and 17th as e-learning days. That was before the Governor's order kicked in. And then we had March 18th as a teacher work day. The teacher work day would normally have been scheduled for March 20th. We then used March 19th through March 27th tomorrow as days to plan for our distance learning program. And so then the change that we made, the only other change we made to the existing school calendar was to eliminate April 8th as a parent conference day for grades K-8 and make that a student learning day for grades K, pre-K through 12. What that does is that with the revision we needed to make to the end of the third quarter, there were 40 instructional days in the third quarter. With the modification to the fourth quarter, there would be 39 instructional days in the fourth quarter. So really trying to even out, it's always been one of our goals, is to try to even out the instructional days in each of the quarters. We would leave the existing spring break as is, the end of the school year, I believe on May 28th, and a teacher work day and graduation slated for Friday, May 29th. So you do indicate every time you adopt a school calendar, a statement that says the school board reserves the right to change or modify the calendar. And so this falls in line with what you indicate when you adopt a school calendar. You could wait to adopt a school calendar till the end of the school year, but we thought it would be important, particularly for families and students, to know what that school calendar looks like for the remainder of the year. So I would recommend your approval of that, adoption of the revision to the school calendar, and stand for any questions you might have.
This is Tracy Stewie again. I was just wondering how that will work specifically more probably with high school classes than the younger classes. Are we going to be moving to like a pass/fail? Or I just think about some of the seniors maybe, or even juniors, and those are like GPAs and a different learning environment and how things might be created and...
Right. Well, we have some issues with going to a pass/fail in the high school, not the least of which anybody who is in a Division I or Division II NCAA kind of situation where they might be a scholarship, at this point, still requires there to be a grade point average and a grade associated with each of the courses that qualify for their eligibility.
Okay.
Our high school staff is looking carefully at adjusting the grade scale, and I don't know that that's totally finalized at this point, but as an example, this might be overly simplified, but if normally you would need 90% for an A-, that percentage might drop to 87%. That's very similar to what we did following the tornado almost 22 years ago to the day. And I think that works. We're certainly looking at something like a pass/fail or meets standards, partially meets standards or does not meet standards at the kindergarten through eighth grade level.
Okay. Thank you.
Drew Dixon, I move approval of the amended school year calendar for the 2020 school year.
Vicki Hager, second.
I think we got...
Vicki did have a view.
Vicki was ahead of time.
Sure, doesn't matter.
Okay.
So we have a motion, Drew Dixon, and a second, Vicki Hager, to approve the calendar. Roll call vote. John, we'll start with you.
John Carlson, aye.
Vicki?
Vicki Hager, aye.
Drew Dixon, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Bill Soderland, aye.
Tim?
Tim Locens, aye.
Ben Leonard, aye. Passes with unanimously, so thank you.
So Ben, did we want to go back to number one, the approval of the COVID sick leave plan, or consider that?
Yes, I think we were, I was going to ask whether we were going to do that in two motions, but I think that makes a lot of sense, so we covered the calendar. So what you need, what we need now is a motion to approve the sick leave policy, correct?
Correct.
I move that we, this is John Carlson, I move that we approve the modified sick leave.
Locens, second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, Drew?
Drew Dixon, aye.
John?
John Carlson, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Vicki?
Vicki Hager, aye.
Bill?
Bill Soderland, aye.
Tim?
Locens, aye.
Ben Leonard, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. So now we're on to action item number two, Dr. Olson, is that correct?
Correct.
And this is, we need to consider an action to convert future school board meetings, study sessions, and regular meetings to teleconference pursuant of Statute MS 13D .021 until further notice.
So a little bit of background, you know, due to the current, obviously, the current situation, the state emergency declarations, guidance about having person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the option has always been in statute to allow the conducting of meetings in accordance with that particular statute. I talked with Terry Morrow from the Minnesota School Boards Association today about this possibility. He indicated that many school boards across the state are moving to these types of meetings, you know, for the foreseeable future. And again, the recommendation is to make that motion if you choose to follow it until further notice. And we right now have a school board study session scheduled for Monday, April 6th, and a regular school board meeting scheduled for Monday, April 20th. So under the current situation, if you chose to approve this action, those meetings would be conducted similar to how we are conducting the meetings tonight. Questions from anybody?
Hearing none, is there a motion and then a second, and then we can have further discussion if necessary?
Locens, so move.
Tracy Stewie will second.
Great, thank you. Tim, we'll do a roll call vote now. Tim?
Aye. Locens, aye.
Bill?
Bill Soderland, aye.
Thank you. John?
John Carlson, aye.
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Vicki?
Vicki Hager, aye.
Drew, did I skip you?
Drew Dixon.
Drew, I didn't catch your vote.
Drew Dixon, aye.
Thank you. Ben Leonard, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Before we move on to information items, this wasn't an action item, but you brought up the future meetings. Dr. Olson, from your perspective, do you think there's any merit to the idea of making the April 6th meeting a special board meeting in case, because we can't take any action during a study session? Is there any reason to think we might need to take action on April 6th?
I mean, there's certainly that possibility. That's probably not a bad idea, because then you, and obviously, it would be posted three days in advance, the agenda would be out there, but you may, there may be a need to take other actions as we move forward, and I think that's a great suggestion.
Yeah, unless anyone else feels otherwise, I think just converting all of our meetings to either regular or special board meetings at this point is wise, because things change every day, so. All right, hearing no further discussion or no, no one's not in favor of that idea or didn't voice that, we'll move on to information items. Update on our COVID-19 planning, Dr. Olson.
I'm going to run through a number of items, and you'll see that at the end, there's an other. If you have any kind of burning questions that you're wondering about, it's a good time to raise them, and we'll certainly try to answer those questions. The first I want to touch on is the distance learning plan. Per the Governor's executive order, all public schools and charter schools in the state of Minnesota had the period of March 18th through March 27th to develop a comprehensive distance learning plan. We have our plan completed. It's going through its last fine tuning tomorrow morning. And then what will happen is individual building principals or program directors will be posting and sending information about the individual building plan to each student's parents for that particular building. And the reason we did that is there are some nuances and slight differences, as you might imagine, in distance learning between South Elementary and the high school. We also will post our comprehensive distance learning plan. It will also include information about our method of special education delivery on our website tomorrow. We will be having our last review of that plan, just to make sure that everything is the way that we would like it to be at 1:00 PM tomorrow. So you can expect that plan will be posted around 3:00 PM tomorrow. So I'll just stop there. The plan looks at kind of an organization of a school day per se. It looks at how we plan to deliver instruction, how we can, information about attendance and grading, et cetera. So I really want to mention that I'm very proud to be a part of our entire staff, all 306 employees who have really pulled together in the last couple of weeks to not only develop our distance learning plan, but to develop a plan to distribute meals to students throughout the district. Today, we went over the 10,000 meal distribution mark, which is pretty phenomenal. We also have school-age care in place. We call it saints' care for the children of critical employees, health workers, law enforcement workers, now food service workers, et cetera. So we are continuing in the development of those plans as well. So any questions that anybody might have on the distance learning plan? You'll certainly see those tomorrow, and I would say this, one of the things that we can be sure of is that our distance learning plans are going to need to be monitored and adjusted as we move forward. And I'd also say this, it's something that has really, really been important for all of us, to say that we are going to be making a gradual move into the academic portion. That's certainly going to start next week. But top on our list is connecting with students personally and individually with adults who are important role models in their lives, making sure that parents and families have an understanding of how this distance learning is going to be delivered, and really troubleshooting any problems that we know are going to be out there. One of the statements that we borrowed from another school district just the other day was crawl, walk, run. So we're going to start slowly. We're going to try to make sure that we're doing the very best job we can, improving every day in how we deliver our instruction. And we know it's going to be a learning process for us, for our students, for our families, but we're going to do the very best job we can. So questions from anybody?
This is Tracy Stewie. I'm curious, how many kids are we utilizing or in the saints' care? How many families are taking advantage of that?
I think we had around 25 students in there today. We're expecting that that number is going to increase for a couple of reasons. There are, we have heard of some daycares that are closing down. That opens up the possibility, and as more and more people on those critical provider lists may get sick, or other people might have to double shifts or whatever it might be, we think that number could increase. We initially identified about 90 children who would qualify, so we think that that number will jump up over the next few weeks.
Cool.
This is John Carlson. Is there any chance that, I think, at least half the board doesn't have a child in school? So we're not getting those updates if we forget to go online and take a look at it, including the plan? I don't know how, the plan might be separate, but it'd be good for us to be able to answer questions, to know what the community is getting, and also, kind of like how you do after an administrative meeting, you send us the minutes. If we could get that information sent to us, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think that's something that we can, we'll, I'll work with Chris Overbow to see if we can get board members included on that communication. Last year, we're communicating daily, and/or getting our kind of summary of our minutes of our planning meetings. The communication, as you mentioned, John, does go up on the website the next day instead of a running, you know, a running total of what we've communicated, but I think getting it in real time could be helpful, so we'll certainly try to do that.
Dr. Olson, I have a question. You know, each class is going to be a little bit unique, every student is unique in how this material is delivered, and you maybe said this before, I missed it, but are we looking predominantly at asynchronous learning, where, you know, we're not expecting kids to be in front of a computer monitor at 11 o'clock doing something? It's, you know, it's, they have to kind of manage their day, but it doesn't require them to be any in front of a monitor at a certain time?
Well, I think we're looking at both. I think clearly, as we get started, the asynchronous or not face-to-face learning that allows students to complete work at different times is probably going to be more likely, but we also think it's important to have that synchronous learning.
Dr. O, you have frozen up.
He might be back.
Yes.
Okay, are you good?
Yep. There's a little bit of an echo, but.
Got some mic feedback.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I was doing, I was pretty excited about the way I was handling technology until that happened, so. So, the other part, I mean, we certainly know that we've got to have some, and want to have some face-to-face interactions as well, so I think that's going to be a balance as we continue to move through our delivery.
Thank you.
That's part of our plan, right? And by the way, Ben, I just really started learning about those, how to use those terms synchronous and asynchronous about 10 days ago, so.
Yeah, me too.
The synchronous, we're talking real-time interaction, and the asynchronous, information that students can be doing at a different time.
Yeah, I don't want to minimize the face-to-face interaction and those possibilities, but in households where you've got multiple kids in multiple grades, and maybe utilizing, you know, the same device in some instances, or maybe just not being able to be present at 10:00 AM, because, you know, they've got to do something from 10:00 to 10:30, but they've got the rest of the day to do their work. We don't want to penalize folks either, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And by the way, one of the other things I want to note is, one of our, our goals, especially in the next couple of weeks, is to try to connect at least once a week with every student, maybe via a phone call, or a hangout, or whatever it might be. That's going to be important to us.
Absolutely.
So, if we're ready, I'll, you know, you touched a bit on it, I'll move into technology access. We are in the process of distributing devices to students throughout the district, really started today, and will continue into tomorrow. We're also, in some cases, particularly at the elementary level, helping students and families to get some of their school supplies if they might pick up earlier. One of the issues that we're very much aware of and very concerned about is the lack of technology access that some students and families may have. So, to that end, one of the things that we've done, and I'll just look for Chris to make sure I'm on the right number here, but we've ordered right around 100 hotspots that we'll want to distribute to families that don't have that good technology access. We also have extended Wi-Fi into the parts at a number of our buildings, so, well, that doesn't seem like the ideal. We think it could work where a family needing to connect could potentially drive a car into a parking lot and connect that way. But we, we also know that we're going to have to have what we've labeled as a packet bucket. So, we may need some packets to go out to some place to carry out instruction until we can really ensure that we have that solid technology connection. And again, I want to stress, we know that, that over the first week plus here, we're going to be experiencing some problems, just like I just experienced, where my system froze up and I left the meeting. So, we want to be understanding of that, and really try to work through that to the extent we can.
I believe Chris Overbow is on the call as well. Chris, did we purchase those hotspots, or are we renting them, or leasing them, or?
We do have an order placed, and we've got an order number and a shift date right now. Inventory is tight on those, but we're expecting them to come in in about 10, not even about 14 days. And we do, yes, purchase the hotspots and, and internet access for five months on it through our education provider, and so we have a dashboard that controls the access time, content, and things of that nature for those families, a wide-open access.
Do you guys hear that?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, so, I also wanted to touch a bit on, on our remote onsite work plan. The governor, in his first executive order, directed that all staff should report to work and carry out duties. In the second executive order, the, in terms of our staff, the direction is to ensure that we provide work for all staff, and to the extent possible, we allow for flexible working conditions, including remote work. So, that's obviously challenging when you also are required to provide childcare for children of critical workers, and we need to distribute meals, and as you can tell, we're distributing a lot of meals. So, what we're doing with our district office, our non-licensed staff, like our paraprofessionals and our custodians and our office staff, is we're, we're working on what we are trying to, to see as an equitable schedule, where about half the time, the staff can work from home, and about half the time, they report to work to carry out those kinds of duties that I'm talking about, along with just some critical functions in the business office, paying the bills, paying people with payroll, and those kinds of things. The expectation with our administrators is unless any of our administrators has meet one of those Minnesota Department of Health conditions, our administrators will be reporting to work and be on-site to help run the ships at our various buildings, troubleshoot, et cetera. So, that's, that's where we sit today. We've been, I think, very fortunate to have great support from all of our employee groups, our employee unions, and we'll keep you posted. If we do have more people that at some level have conditions that don't allow them to come to work, we're going to have to try to think more creatively, and those may be some things in subsequent board meetings that we're going to need to look at and talk about in terms of options. Questions that people might have there?
This is John Carlson. Did I hear, we still have to wait two weeks for those hotspots to come in?
Yes. There, there's a, as you might imagine, there's quite a, quite a push, though, as we ordered them early. The, the good news is from the supplier that they can be regulated, and they'll have five months' worth of access, but that, that's really why we have identified the, the packet bucket and connections by phone with, with students and families where they may have internet access problems. But in terms of, and I think that's one of the reasons why we're really calling it distance learning, because in some cases, technology isn't available. And while we're trying to address that and be equitable, we're cognizant of the fact that we've got to have some other methods of delivery as well.
We do have some hotspots, though, currently, correct?
About 20. We have about 20 hotspots that we currently have that are being distributed to families and students. But the end of the day, we'll have over 100.
And just to follow up, I'm guessing that that number wasn't an educated guess, but also based on the survey that was sent to parents, which, you know, we've, we've been in this for a couple of weeks, and then we had to survey parents, and then we had to order, and so I certainly understand why there's a little bit of a lag.
Correct, yeah. And again, we have, you know, probably slightly under 100 families that we've identified at this point that would need a hotspot or some sort of additional assistance and access. You know, the other thing that we're going to be learning about in the next, next week or so is, in relation to technology access, excuse me, is not only the access and availability to get information into the homes of students and families, but also for our teachers who may be working remotely, their, the strength of their technology and their internet capabilities to provide that instruction. So, we've been trying to test that out over the past few days, but we know that's also going to be an area that we're, we'll learn a lot more about, and probably relatively quickly as we move into next week. I want to move into number four then, and that's the budget implications. One of the things that, as, as I've been out and visited on Google Chat and other technological means with a number of superintendents around the state, we feel really fortunate that at your emergency board meeting about 12 days ago now, or whatever it was, you authorized the, a budget line for meeting the kinds of things that we need to do. So, the hotspots are certainly a part of that. We're also getting Google Voice authorization or permission to many of our employees, our teachers for sure, some of our paraprofessionals and administrators who might be making phone calls to students and families. What Google Voice does is it allows you, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, to make a phone call to a student, and when the student or parent calls you back, it goes through a different phone number than your personal cellphone number, or personal home phone number. So, we thought that was an important piece, and we have that in place and ready to start rolling out as well. We also have purchased some Odysseyware site licenses. Odysseyware is an online credit recovery program for high school students. And you might remember that we, that we really worked hard this year to start looking at a different way of providing credit recovery in an after-school setting, but that's person-to-person, so that's now gone by the wayside. And we certainly have some of our high school students who are concerned about being able to recapture those credits needing to graduate, so that's what's that, that's about. The other piece is the two substitute teachers that I mentioned. So, again, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Dr. Olson, I, I have one, it's not really out of left field, but not on either of those topics, but could you give an update on activities?
So, right now, all student activities at, at the high school league activities, the school play, etc., are on hold. The governor's order, in the best-case scenario, would have going back to school on May 5th, but that order could also be extended, so that's something that we have to have out there. We are looking at, trying to find different ways, if we come to that, to make sure that our, our students, particularly our seniors, have a solid end to their senior year, and obviously, it's going to be a very unusual end to their senior year, but how we might carry out graduation options for, you know, some sort of social gathering-type prom, but again, that, that remains to be seen. But all state high school league activities, spring play activities, club and organization activities are suspended at the current time.
Thank you. I, I know that the situation changes daily, and, and the reason they picked the May date and not a date further in the future is because they wanted more time to see how things will work out over the next few weeks, but do we have an idea of when we would hear? I know you're in pretty constant contact with the Department of Education, but when there might be a public announcement about the remainder of school? I know some school districts go later in the year than, than we do, but I just added it up, I think I had 16 days. So, there's 16 possible days of in-person education left this year. At what point do we decide it's maybe too disruptive or not safe to bring kids back for 16 days?
I think what we heard from the commissioner today was that with the, the plan right now is to see how the stay-at-home order works, whether that mitigates the additional cases of COVID, and then what it looks like as they look at data and modeling to see if bringing school back in session makes sense. So, I, I would think we would probably find out relatively close to the end of our distance learning period if we were either going to continue with May 5th, or extend our distance learning plan.
Thank you.
Are there other questions that anybody might have about what we're doing, or what you might be hearing, or you want, would like to have an answer about?
This is Tracy Stewie. I don't really have a question, but more of a pass it along. I just, over the last couple of days, hearing different teachers kind of doing their little test calls for Google Meet, and it's always amazing to me to see that, that, how connected your kids really are with those teachers, and they are their own family. So, they're all figuring out the Google Meet at the same time, and helping the teacher figure stuff out, and, and it just means a lot to the kids to be able to have that, even if it's 10 minutes, just being able to feel part of that community again. So, just shout out for that.
Thank you. I think, I think that's really important, and I know our teachers really do want to make those connections with students.
Vicki Hager here. I just wanted to say, wow. I personally just want to thank everybody for all their hard work. It's just fabulous to see everybody pulled together. You've been working really hard, and we all appreciate it.
Thank you, and I'll pass that along to our, our team and staff.
Yeah, absolutely, from all of us, please. This has been a tremendous amount of, a tremendous amount of work.
Yeah, and you know, we're gonna, we're going to be dealing with lots of things over the next, next number of weeks, but we're going to get them figured out. One of the things that is probably unfortunate, and yet fortunate, is we have had some experience in dealing with disruptions to our school year, obviously with the tornado in 1998. Different, of course, because once we knew what the damage was in 1998, we could develop a plan and execute that plan. Things change rather rapidly here, but just in terms of how we deal with funding, the State Department right now has been very, very clear that they're allowing lots of flexibility to make sure that we're able to provide the kinds of programs and services that we need to, to our students.
This is John Carlson, echoing what everybody else says, I think the teachers are doing an awesome job getting ready, but your administrators, too. I stopped out at the high school this afternoon, and they're in one of the open areas, the science math areas on the first floor. I walked in there, and nobody looked up. Nobody even, they are so focused and so into getting things done and getting things ready. I was, I was impressed by them ignoring me, actually.
And, and John, they were practicing social distancing, right?
Yeah, they were, they were far apart from each other. Yep. Yeah, they were, they were far apart from each other. Yep.
And I also, this is Tracy Stewie. I should also say that like the, the staff that needs to come in and do their A days and B days or serve lunches or do daycare when that really wasn't what they were hired to do. Sometimes, you know, it's easy to sometimes forget about that or it's just that's, I mean, it's, it's hard and it's not quite as maybe nice as what some of the teachers have to be able to work remote, but such needed jobs and it's very appreciated.
Yeah, thank you for that. And as I mentioned, it's, it's just, it's heartwarming to see dedicated, all of our employees are from our, our paraprofessionals that are providing childcare and serving meals to our office support staff who are, you know, stepping up and, and a lot of different things. For our custodians who are going the extra mile to disinfect and clean and, and do all of those things. Our, as our teachers have been really phenomenal. Really willing to work hard, work together, which has always been their case. Our administrative team has been stellar as well. So I think I've got the number right, 306 employees and, and they have all been fantastic.
Absolutely.
This is Bill Soderlund. Yeah, this is Bill. I'd like to make a resolution for unanimously that we thank the faculty and staff and Dr. Olson for all the work they've been doing. And I think I just want to echo or even just take, make a resolution, just thank them unanimously as a board. This is very impressive. It's a, it's a very difficult situation. And I think we all greatly appreciate the effort that's being done here.
Thank you, Bill. This is Ben Leonard. I haven't done a good job of saying my name when I talk, but yeah, absolutely. Dr. Olson, do we need to vote on that? Can we reflect that in the minutes? Can we pass that along? What's the best way to do that?
I think, yeah, I think you could do either. We certainly, we certainly can reflect it in the minutes under board members' comments. And we will pass it on as we send our information out, you know, tomorrow to our, our staff and, and et cetera. So either way, it works. I think we hear you loud and clear and we appreciate, we appreciate your support.
Do members feel strongly about passing a motion or?
I think as long as the message is delivered, I think that's what's important. That they know that we have their backs and that we're impressed by what they're doing and, and thankful and grateful.
Absolutely. Maybe we should get together and do a board. We could all sing Imagine. And then Drew can splice it together. And then we can distribute that amongst the staff to lift their spirits.
That's great. Oops, Vicky.
That's been tried. I don't, I don't know if we should go down that road.
Yeah, it, it has. It didn't, it wasn't received as well as it was intended. So Bill, I thank you.
This is.
Initiating that, that comment. Yes, go ahead, Bill.
No, this is Tim Locustard, and you don't sing anything.
Yeah, I don't need, I don't need to sing. Well, as long as we're, we can clearly articulate, I, I think Dr. Soderlund said it really well that you know, we just thank all the staff. And if we can use his words and reflect that in the minutes, I think that 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 would, that would be a good thing. Is there any further discussion, anything else, Dr. Olson?
I don't have, if, I certainly know that anytime you have questions, contact me and we'll try to get the best answer we can to you.
Great. This is Ben Leonard again. Before I call for a motion in a second to adjourn. The next meeting, which I think we talked about being a special board meeting, will be April 6th. And that's at 6:30, correct, Dr. Olson?
Correct. And we probably, you know, unless we find that, it, it seems like this format has worked relatively well with technology and we'll try to, try to continue with it.
One further question, what's the, how long will it take to get this on the district website?
Hopefully tomorrow we'll be able to get it up ASAP tomorrow morning.
Okay, great. Thank you. This is, this is Ben Leonard. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Vicky Hager, I make a motion to adjourn.
Drew Dixon, second.
Excellent. We have a motion in a second to adjourn. Let's see the order here. Drew?
Drew Dixon, aye.
Thank you. John?
Aye. John Carlson, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Thank you. Vicky?
Vicky Hager, aye.
Bill?
Bill Soderlund, aye.
Tim?
Tim Locustard, aye.
Ben Leonard, aye. Motion carries unanimously. The meeting is adjourned.